I just opened that door so I can see the windows.
Yeah.
But I mean, I was gonna shut it.
Okay, we're calling this caucus meeting order, please. Okay, I'm gonna be looking for a motion to dispense rules here for the minutes of the second regular meeting, October twenty-seventh, and the first regular meeting dated Wednesday, November tenth, in acceptance prepared by the clerk. There's five pieces of communication, questions or comments for communication. Oh, Dallas, we get two committees, you gotta add them to.
You got it.
Okay, any other comments, questions on communications? Mayor's report, Mayor Miller.
I just wanted to read it on the floor, but I just wanted to add, and I'll make sure when I speak in there, add to, uh, K O Consulting just got us another grant through the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Comp for seven thousand thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for an extraction machine for the fire department.
Are they new one, or is it gonna come to this one?
Um, we're not sure, we may have to install it because it may have to be in by the end of the year, and then we'll just move it with the new system, so we're not sure yet, but we're able to purchase that already, so that was a smaller grant, but still. Yep.
Take what we need.
Yeah, and they're trying to go down that way to see what they can.
Do you like that?
Can you read your report on recording?
Yes.
Okay, report of standing committees, Dallas, you wanna?
Yeah, um, I'd like to convene finance and legislation to bring out a piece of legislation. Mr. Burnside? Mr. Carcelli is absent. Um, this is an ordinance authorizing the city of Struthers to implement a plan to control wastewater backflow from entering structures and authorizing payment, repealing ordinance number zero four dash zero seven eight and declaring an emergency. Mary, you wanna speak on this at all, or Guy? I'm sorry, this is you.
Speaking out, Guy.
You're with this forward.
Are you all familiar with this backflow preventer program that we kinda have? We've talked about it in different things. Um, originally, when this was, when you guys put in the original legislation on this, there was actually funds for that, they came into it, and it was tied to that, so we felt, you know, we have to update the legislation. What this basically does is, is that, you know, there's no magic fix to all the flow that comes through the city, especially in rainfalls. We get people that are in certain areas that get it worse than others, sanitaries back up. This mechanism is a backflow preventer which is put into the sanitary line within the house, and in order to do that, you also have to have a sump pump in your house that takes away your under drains from your house, too. So if any of the flow backs up into the homeowner's basement, this valve will lock down, or there's a mechanic one, you actually, in a bad storm, you just go down and close it off, it's a knife valve, that's the better valve.
It's probably stronger, correct?
Yeah, it's gonna be stronger, the other one would be spring loaded, and there's new technologies actually that are coming out now, so, um, but what we're doing is, you know, we wanna try to help out our residents the best we can. Do a sump pump and a storm, and a check valve, have that installed, you're looking in a neighborhood of sixty-five hundred, seven thousand dollars for the homeowner. This legislation just basically is what it was before, we'll cover up to fifty percent of the cost, or up to fifteen hundred. Due to my limited budget, we put in there only for, I can only do five a year. Okay, at a total cost of like seventy-five hundred dollars.
Guy, this comes out of wastewater, is it?
Comes out of S D O, yes, yes it does. So, um, I mean, that's how we have to fund it for now.
Sure.
And, uh, I just, we had two people actually do that, do this here, and they both, they were up on Lake Shore, they both did it, and this legislation will go active to that, so they can be paid.
Now, I noticed that they have to be inspected by a Mahoning County.
Plumbing inspector, yes, everything has to be done, they can't bring a shoemaker in, you know, they have to have a licensed plumber to do this, we need to know that it's done properly, and it needs, it needs permits anyways from Mahoning County. Uh, we are not asking permits, uh, for the city, but, uh, and I think the permit's like fifteen dollars, but the plumbing inspector will come out, look at the progress. The legislation's tied there to contact myself, or Tim, or Frank, so we can explain this legislation so that they come to submit payment, they follow the, they exhibit, we can pay them properly.
And it says that Mahoning County has a list of qualified inspectors.
Yes, the health department has that, we also have it too, which I can supply to any homeowner or resident, I've done that, we've been doing that as a matter of fact, so.
I would determine which five, yeah, I mean, what if you have over the people coming, the first five that are gonna apply for it?
The first five, yeah, yeah, and, you know.
Because after that, you know, they're all gonna start coming in.
Well, the thing of it is, yeah, a lot of people talk about it, but it's a big expense, and, you know, and, and that's what you gotta look at, and then you have to consider in your mind, too, I've had backup in my basement.
Sure.
Three or four times, I don't have to check valves.
Like I said, once people hear, oh, we're getting free money.
But it's not doing money.
It's very limited.
Limited, but yeah. Well, that's why we put a cap, because my budget can only stand so much.
But, you know, for next year, hopefully, they can get there first and be one of those five, if we're able to have five next.
Well, we, we've only had a hundred and eighty apply for it in the last, since you've been here, how many people?
Two, we, we've had that I've been with, and they've both been on Lake Shore, and they were properly installed, permits were taken out.
Figure you're still coming out of pocket five thousand bucks.
Sure, oh, yeah, definitely. And the one of them was just, he had his, he had a sump pump in his house, so all, he, his bill was like twenty-seven hundred because all he had to do was put the check valve in. So we're only reimbursing him up to fif- you know, fifty percent of that total bill.
Total bill.
Yeah.
Is it fifty percent or fifteen hundred, whatever's higher?
Up to fifteen hundred.
Okay, so, no matter what, we're only.
So I can, his bill was twenty-seven hundred, we're only, we're only going fif- we're only covering fifty percent of his bill, and the permit fees aren't included.
If somebody's with sixty-five hundred, we're only covering fifteen hundred.
We can only go to fifteen hundred, we're trying to help.
It's the actual labor for the, for the job that we're covering.
We're covering, yeah, to have the install.
I just said, not the permits or anything.
No, we don't cover the permits, they have to take that out on their own, and they're, being a licensed plumber, they're gonna know that, that they have to go and get a permit from the county on this, so.
Great.
Uh, that kinda explains it, and, you know, uh, what it is, and, you know, with the floodings and the flows that we get, you know, I mean, this is the best way we can try to help out our residents, you know, I wish we could do more, we can get grant funding or do whatever, that would be great, too, you know?
Yeah.
If that comes, then I'll be knocking at your door again for new legislation.
Well, in the future, let's hope more people are able to get it and do wanna get it, and let's hope in the years that comes budget, we're not limited to five, you know what I mean?
Right.
Never know, I'm just, you know, things could change, you never know, so.
The only caveat, too, John, I was gonna contact you, I need, in the ordinance too, also included, I need a release letter.
Yes.
You can draw up for us, so that releases the city of all liability. All we're doing is trying to help them out, we have no liability if the valve fails or anything.
Right.
On that order. So, that's the only thing I gotta get with John on.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Motion to bring it out?
Motion to bring it out.
I second. And that's it for finance and legislation, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thanks, Dallas.
You got it.
Okay, report of standing committees.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Have a good holiday, guys.
Um, so, we will have, uh, Tom Dallas will come and talk to us on December first, so he'll be here for that, that's, that's the next one, right?
That's the committee next.
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll have finance and legislation to follow Lori's meeting.
Okay. Any other committees? Uh, just a reminder, I handed out the letters to help me pick on choices for committees for next year, so we do these guys, we got time, just trying to make sure we don't forget. Okay, that gives us five pieces of legislation for tonight, uh, number three and number four will go to a second meeting. Uh, questions or comments on legislation? Unfinished business? New business? Okay, uh, under new business, uh, there's been some talk about people not getting in the building for meeting nights. So I met with Joey, and I met with different people, and I said, well, we'll just put a rock by, or drop the back door. Well, you know, that allows anybody to come in, so to try to control who's coming in the door, the idea come up with Mike, uh, that works for the court that, uh, inspects people coming in, is, we talked about paying him one hour every Wednesday, maybe four hours for the month to work the back door. What he would do is, he would, you know, make people come through, the door's not just hanging like right now, anybody can walk, and they can hang in, in a restroom, they can hide it, they have any ill faith, uh, desire to do anything to this building, they can hide anywhere while we're here and we don't know. So to control people coming in the building, the idea come up with, uh, hiring Mike one hour every Wednesday to work the back door. Uh, I met with the judge, the judge is for letting him work that, uh, we pay, he has paid fourteen fifty an hour, so you figure an hour every Wednesday, so like, uh, caucus, or, you know, like, regular meeting nights, he would come in, say, six-ten, work the sex- seven-ten, so anybody wants to come in for a caucus meeting, they could get, come in. Somebody wants to come in for the regular meeting, they can come in, he's there, and after seven-ten, after one hour, the door's locked, if, if you can't get in by seven-ten, then.
Mike, I, I thought the whole purpose of the code back there was for the people that belong in here that have the code, you get in the back door.
Yeah, but you have the resident that.
But I thought everybody else was supposed to come through the front.
Well, I'm getting to that.
Okay, that's how it was, that's how it was supposed to be.
I'm getting to that, okay, I'm gonna finish, so, he would work, uh, one hour every Wednesday, so if they come in, if he comes in, say, six-ten, he's gone by seven-ten, so people that wanna come in, have the opportunity to come in for the caucus meeting or the regular meeting. We're not gonna, and then when we announce the meetings, or Megan announces the meeting, she would announce, it would be coming in through the back door. We're not gonna a hundred percent stop them from coming in the front, but there's some people that have a hard time parking in the back, walking around the building, climbing the steps to get in, it'd be a lot easier for them to get in through the front. Okay.
Handicap entrances in the back.
I understand that, yeah.
That makes sense, too, but do you guys think it's better to still use both, or, I mean, one entrance seems easier to secure, if you were worried about security, lock the front and have everybody come through the back?
Most people, Dallas, are gonna park in the back anyway.
Absolutely, that's what I was saying, I think.
You're not gonna stop them a hundred percent.
And again, I don't think it really matters all that much, but we might as well lock down the front.
If they go there and it's locked, that's.
Have everybody come through the back, and that way we can say, come.
That's what Megan, when she announces the meeting, she'll put that in there, entrance into the meeting would be through the rear door.
Okay.
And, I mean, if we wanna lock.
That's all right, I mean, do you see a problem?
We have the, the metal detector that they don't use back there, and he can activate that for the back.
He's, he's gonna work that.
The door to the dispatch is always open there.
So he's gonna work that, and then also, we come up with the idea, everybody comes in, sign their name and address, so we know who's coming in through that door. So Mike gets paid fourteen fifty an hour, and I talked with Chrissy, uh, we are in session ten months, so it's gonna cost roughly five hundred and some odd dollars for the year to make him, to have him work the back door, okay? So the money would come out, and I think she said the building fund, the only thing that she would need is, Mike would have to fill a voucher out, say, he worked, you know, December first from six o'clock to seven o'clock, or whatever time, and I would sign it and then give it to Chrissy, so what she would do is transfer, say, out of the building fund, that amount of money into the judge's budget, because he'll stay a judge's employee, but just funding him for that hour would come out of like the building, I'll say, that's all he would need. So I'm asking council, what, what, what do they think about, if we decide to go through that, it would start the first to next year, because she asked us to start it for the new budget, uh, so, what do you think? It's, it's five hundred dollars and some odd change for the year.
Do we need legislation to create a new position?
She said no, but, you know, just probably around, well, she said yes, we're gonna probably need a resolution, yes, you're right, but right, for right now, just, you know, what do you think about?
I mean, I've never felt unsafe here, to be honest.
I don't either.
I mean, we have the police station downstairs, but I, I don't know if anybody else does, I mean, we do, these are crazy times, so, I don't, I guess I don't really, if somebody feels unsafe, or somebody feels like we should, then we should, I, it doesn't really matter to me either way.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, we never know, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it looks more buttoned up, a little more.
Mayor, one thing, too, if we do have the front locked, and we just have a, a guard at the back, would he be able to possibly get like a dispatch radio, because that's quite a distance away if there was some type of issue, that he could talk to dispatch, I mean, if you were up front, you're literally ten steps away in the back.
He actually did approach me about that today, he wanted to, and if there was any cost, you guys had, uh, I already talked to Dom, if you guys had to buy something extra, Dom said he would split whatever that cost, it would be with you, if that's what you guys decided to do, if, if there had to be an extra purchase of something.
I mean.
A radio, panic button, whatever.
So, we don't have anybody at that front door?
No.
No.
So there was never anybody?
No.
No.
Dispatch have a camera on that?
Years ago, we, we had, we had somebody up there, you had to enter through the front, and we had a guard up there to be there during the meeting, but.
I do remember a police officer being up there before, so.
I mean, at the same time, again, I, the police station's in the building.
We can't utilize a police officer, is that what?
We can, we can, anytime we build, we need to.
But, though, we're streaming it out to the worldwide web, so that, if something pops off, we don't want, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But I'm saying, so this isn't something that we could utilize a police officer, this is something that we should.
They're taking somebody off the street, they get a nurse to call, and they need every police officer they can, and.
There's a, something going on, we just call them, and they would come up.
Okay.
Which council think, I, I mean, like I said, I, it doesn't bother me either way, i- if nobody thinks we need it, then I'm fine with that, if somebody feels unsafe, sees it as some type of liability, not having one, you know, I'm fine with that, too.
Could we go around the table and say yes or no, and then we would prepare a resolution and, and have Chrissy?
What does the mayor think of this, do you think it would be a good, good idea to do that, I mean, obviously, you're here, most of the time, Tim's, you're here in the building.
I'm okay with whatever you guys wanna do with this one, I'm okay either way.
I think it's a good idea to have someone back there to let, if you got elderly people coming in, or whatever.
Fair enough, Tim, and you are in charge of the building and grounds, as a safety service director, so if you feel like we should, I'm fine with that, too.
I just think it would be summed off with the, the public coming down to your meeting.
It's minimal cost, yeah.
Right, at five hundred dollars a year.
It looks professional, but.
And we could always offer side jobs, but then you're talking to the muddies, and I don't know the ones from the pool and the guys.
I just was curious, that's all.
If we were overloaded with staffing, I would say yes, but we're not in that position.
There's a clock, you know, at the front.
Yeah, and if we ever get, we have a meeting where somebody's, we know somebody's coming in, and they're gonna be, or we need one, we can always have one.
I, I personally would feel more safe having somebody at the back, I'll tell you.
We could, we can activate the, the metal detector when needed, I don't think you need it. And he's trained at, you know, operating that, processing people through it, so.
I think it's good, like, yeah.
Megan?
Yes.
Dallas?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll get with, uh, uh, the mayor and Chrissy and prepare a resolution, and we'll start that sometime after the first meeting, actually, Chrissy asked me to do when the new budget starts, it'd be easier to.
Is it hard to, to work that detector at all?
No, no, but there's, he, he had demonstrated it when the light, when the lights go off, it's like, it's three different intervals, it gives him an ID on where there may be metal, so if he has something on his shoulders, the lights at the top are gonna light up, if it's something around his waist, it could be the center set of lights, if down low, it could be something around his ankles, and he demonstrated that, that, you know, he knows how to detect if anybody's got any gun on, where it might be, and then he can put the lawn on, and he's. Okay?
He'll have a lawn, too, so.
Right, that's what I was just telling her, um, so I'll get with, uh, the mayor and Chrissy get a resolution passed up for next month's, in time, we'll pass it, and start that sometime after the first meeting. That's all I have under new business, report of all auditors, John?
I have no report this evening.
Questions or comments for all auditors? Our auditor is not here, reporter, our safety director?
I have no need, uh, report this evening.
Uh, questions or comments for our safety director? Are streets all paved, Tim?
Yes.
Is lower Creed on next year's?
I'd have to look.
Uh, 'cause it's, uh, I was asked, and it's kinda rough, and.
I think it's just Creed from Fifth Street to Youngstown Pond and, Poland Road, I'm almost positive, it's not.
That's the upper.
It's the upper.
Yeah, but if you go by the lower part, it's really bad.
It's a little bad.
So if you can take a look at that.
We can't have councils. It's a little bad.
Well, they're set for, like, the next, they're all set for like the next four years.
I can check it, we'll just, because we have all, I, I know.
It's all the way up there?
Yeah, it, it is bad, but if it gets good, they're just gonna speed, so, but it doesn't matter.
Damned if you do, you're damned if you don't.
My neighbors are hounding at me, so. Um, did you guys check out that rain this week, or it didn't rain enough, huh, for that?
No, we all went up there, there rained, but.
It didn't really rain enough?
No.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I went up there, I, I didn't see anything coming out of the road, but it obviously wasn't, the pavement was wet, you couldn't, it, there really wasn't enough, I mean.
All the way up, nobody's was coming out all the way up to Hotter Road, and I looked at that one.
And the whole road was saturated, so you really couldn't see anything, anyway.
Was it covered?
I'm sorry?
Was it covered?
I mean, it's, it, it's covered with dirt.
There's, there's a chunk of it that's missing with, with grass, so.
Frank is, is aware the next time we have the, next time there rains, I'll be up there.
Yeah, he got some pretty good footage of the last rain, and the water's coming down from Youngstown Pond, flooding the houses on Fish Street.
I, I truly believe that a lot of that water is coming from the Bordenland area.
Yeah, but there was probably a river on each side of the road like that coming down, not even going into the sewerdrives, and that's Poland's, you know? And it was just coming straight down the back.
Just bypassing the, the drains?
Yeah.
So they must be out of grade.
And there was one here and one here, and it was going right by.
I mean, I notice they get paved over the years, sometimes they.
You mean a one-seventy?
They get a little bit too high to actually go in there.
Uh, coming down from Youngstown Pond, yeah, down, down to Fish Street.
Right over there by Shepburn and over there by Buzzittine, that's, by Bell and Ray, that's where it gets a little bad.
E C C, that used, there used to be, that's a swamp area behind that, that used to be a pond back there.
Right.
So they eliminated the ponds, so.
But now it's in that neighbor's yard over there, right next to E C C, there's shears, that is bad.
Well, there used to be, behind the school trout.
I wish.
They filled that in to make a football field in the area, and all that water coming in from Bordenland just bypasses there and runs.
Yeah.
Any other questions for our safety director? Okay, before adjourn, we'll be looking for an executive session at the, at the end of our agenda. Motion to adjourn this caucus.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll second it, caucus, you can adjourn. Marv, we shook it off.
I'm gonna shut you down, boy.
It's unbelievable.
Ron?
I thought that was a cell phone.
I call this regular Struthers City Council meeting to order, Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, seven PM, clerks, you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Ballack?
Here.
Mr. Bayes?
Here.
Mr. Beasley?
Here.
Mr. Burnside?
Here.
Mr. Carcelli is absent.
Who was that?
I don't know.
Hello? It wasn't me?
Mr. Carcelli, okay, is absent, Ms. Greenwood?
Here.
Ms. Pingley?
Here.
President Patrick?
Here, from Stanford pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to excuse Ron Carcelli from tonight's meeting.
Make a motion?
Dallas makes a motion. Megan seconds it.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
I need a motion to dispense with the reading and the minutes of the second regular meeting dated October twenty-second, and the first regular meeting dated Wednesday, November tenth, in acceptance prepared by the clerk. Dallas makes a motion?
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second, Megan seconds it.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have five pieces of communication.
Number one, Struthers Municipal Treasurer's cash transaction report for the month of October twenty-twenty-one submitted by Robert D. Carcelli, Struthers City Treasurer. Number two, Struthers City Auditor's month, monthly statement of cash position, revenue reports with transfers in and out, and expense transaction ledger reports for the month of October twenty-twenty-one submitted by Christina Esbel, Struthers City Auditor. Number three, notice to the legislative authorities of Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding B, transfer permit number five-seven-seven-six-zero-five, six-zero-zero-zero-five from Margaret Chanowski LLC DBA Bolodrome Lanes to Justin McManus DBA Monk Street Billiards and Bowling, fifty-six State Street, Struthers, Ohio four-four-four-seven-one, received November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Just for council's information, we are going to request a hearing because we have received this one two weeks ago, and there's, um, reports on that one. So that'll be a hearing in Columbus, and then number four, notice to the legislative authorities of Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding BN permit number one-one-nine-four-five-eight-five-six for less LLC DBA six for less eight-six-six Youngstown Pond Road, Struthers, Ohio four-four-four-seven-one, received November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And mayor's report dated Monday, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one submitted by Mayor Catherine Chacon-Deller.
Okay, council, you heard the reading, get the communication, need a motion to receive and file, Rich?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second, Megan?
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
And Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mayor's report, Mayor Miller?
Thank you. We had two food drives last week, we would like to thank Ambets who provided food for over four hundred families, and the Boo Squad who provided two hundred and thirteen Thanksgiving meals, we're grateful for the continued support for the community. The fire department, we would like to welcome Alex Sepesi to our volunteer squad at the fire department, he was sworn in by Chief Mike Agnon and will be a great asset to our community. Also, under the fire department, I would like to announce that we received, uh, through KO Consulting and her team, um, another Ohio Bureau of Workers' Comp grant for $7,037.50 for an extractor, um, for the news station. Holiday Lights Contest, the Struthers Second Annual Holiday Lights Contest is now underway, the contact, contest will take place December 7th through the 13th from 6:00 to 9:00. Contest requirements are open to any Struthers City school residents or business, only one entry per address. The decorations might, must be completed and submitted by December 5th. Our local judges will be looking at the decorations the week of December 7th through 13th during the hours 6:00 to 9:00, please see the city's Facebook page or call my office for more details. Our new fire station, the bids will be opened on Thursday, December 2nd next week at 2:00. And upon observance of this Thanksgiving holiday, city hall will be closed Thursday, November 25th and Friday, November 26th. Have a happy and healthy and safe Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, mayor, any questions or comments for our mayor? Okay, if none, report to standing committees.
We're gonna have a meeting for Public Utilities at 6:00 on December 1st.
On December 1st also, we'll have finance and legislation.
Okay, thank you. Any other committees? Okay, going down in the legislation, there's five pieces of legislation, at this time, uh, anyone in the audience wishing to address council on legislation only, you're welcome to do so. Okay, if none, we'll go into reading of legislation, number one's an ordinance.
Number one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding to amend the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Struthers and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1910 to address wage re-opener negotiations contained in Article 17, Section 3 of the collective bargaining agreement for years 2021 and 2022 and declaring emergency.
Okay, council, you heard, reading any ordinance, I need a motion to suspend the rules of council, place the ordinance up for passage, Rick makes a motion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules of council, put the ordinance up for passage.
Dallas seconds it.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Questions or comments under suspension? Need a motion to pass is read?
A motion to pass is read.
Second, uh, Dallas?
Second.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Okay, number two's an ordinance.
Number two, an ordinance authorizing the City of Struthers to implement a plan to control wastewater backflows from entering structures and authorizing payment, repealing ordinance number 04-078 and declaring emergency.
Okay, council, you heard, reading any ordinance, I need a motion to suspend the rules of council, place the ordinance up for passage, Bob makes a motion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules of council, place the ordinance up for passage.
Megan seconds it.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Questions or comments under suspension? Need a motion to pass is read?
Motion to pass is read, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Megan seconds.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Okay, number three's an ordinance.
At first reading, an ordinance establishing a credit card policy for the City of Struthers.
Okay, council, I need a motion to pass, uh, this to a second reading.
Motion to pass, second.
Okay, Megan?
Second.
Dallas seconds it.
And Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Okay, there goes a second reading, number four's an ordinance.
First reading, an ordinance adopting the flag design of five points created by Ryan Wiegalski as the official flag of the City of Struthers and repealing ordinance number 21-050.
Okay, council, you heard, reading any ordinance, I need a motion to pass that to a second reading. Okay, Megan makes a motion, Ricky seconds it.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Okay, number five is a resolution.
Um, Chrissy, um, I'm just gonna say the fiscal officer's certificate was read and signed by Christina Espehl, Struthers City Auditor. Um, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit applications and to execute contracts and act as chief executive officer for the Ohio Public Works Commission program year 2022, OPWC-funded project, namely the year 2022 resurfacing project, and to designate the auditor as the chief fiscal officer for all grant documents for the project, and to designate MS Consultants, Inc. as the project manager and declaring emergency.
Okay, council, you heard a reading of the resolution, need a motion to suspend the rules of council, place the resolution to pass, Dallas?
To suspend the rules of council, place the resolution up for passage.
Second. Second, Megan?
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Questions or comments?
Bayes has to make a motion?
Huh?
Bayes has to make a motion?
Make the motions, pass is read.
Me, motion to pass is read.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Unfinished business? New business? Report to law director, John, do you have anything?
I do not, Mr. President.
Questions or comments for a law director? A auditor is absent, or to our safety director, Timmy? Questions and comments for our safety director? If none, anyone wishing to address council, as you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alan Chaplock, 585 Edison, Struthers, Ohio. Well, I understand, Bob, what's going on? Uh, you guys are complaining about, uh, unlicensed vehicles and equipment, um, I was understanding that there's a new driveway, and I talked to the mayor's secretary, um, I have all my permits and everything, how much cost giving my driveway done, I'm getting a complaint from a neighbor that's taking pictures that I really don't appreciate of my property and complaining about it, I don't know why he's even looking at my property, he was up the street from me. I've met all your guys' requirements, I've worked with the mayor's secretary that I was clear and okay, and now I have some nosy neighbor that I don't have the police claiming you guys, you guys keep sending mess to my house. And now this is day two that I have to pull off my dog to come down here and address these things. Um, I just came down here Monday night to talk to your secretary, and now I had to pull off tonight, I can show you my schedule, um, come figure out what I can do about this.
Mr. Ruzik?
I mean, uh, I seen the gentleman, he's in a meeting like this, um, I seen the fishers, he's taken up my property, um, the other complaints about our neighborhood, um, off sort of my house. I have no problems around my house, I don't make any noises, no other complaints besides the gentleman up the street from me, he don't like what's in my driveway.
Well, I'll just speak to you for a second, um, if you're getting cited, you're in violation of one of our ordinances. If he, we're not citing you because this guy is complaining, we can't cite you because he's complaining. We may have went and looked at the property because he's complaining, and if there is a violation, we're gonna cite you for it. I don't, I haven't seen your property. I haven't seen your property, I, I have no idea, but I, what I'm stating is, if you got cited, you were generally in violation of something.
You weren't cited for anything, though?
No, this is my camper, saying that I have to get my camper off of my property. Um, and when I talked to the mayor's secretary, we've already, uh, complied to it, 'cause you guys were complaining that it wasn't on gravel, which there was gravel there, it was just overgrown because of years of being down, it was packed down, so I re-gravelled it all and put the stuff back that's been there. And now it's just becoming a problem after, I don't know how long, um, I got a complaint about my duly truck that I've had there for over two years, that was a personal vehicle, that now I have to pay to sit somewhere, and now I'm getting told I have to pay to get my camper and two of my trailers off my property that have all my belongings, 'cause I just moved down here to take care of my dad off the property.
Alan, is your duly standard truck bed, or is it a flatbed or utility bed?
It's a flatbed with toolboxes on inside.
We have an ordinance under the commercial truck ordinance that says that if you have a duly, a one-ton duly, it will be deemed commercial and not allowed to be parked at a residence if it does not have a standard truck bed on it, that is a ordinance that we have. I understand, you probably don't know these, but.
How am I supposed to, you know what I mean, it's not.
I understand, but.
We, we own horse or livestock.
I understand.
Horses and stuff.
But under ordinance here, it seems to be a commercial vehicle if it does not have a standard truck bed. I'm not arguing with you guys, I, and I'm not, I appreciate you coming down here, voicing your concerns about this, but a lot of these, it's important to know the ordinances in the city, and I feel like if Mr. Ruzik's sending you these, he's at least in form.
Sometimes I just go out with my name on them, you know, and sometimes it always, uh.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you gotta get up here, speak.
My name's Josie Stratus, 585 Edison, so there's a neighbor that lives a couple houses down that has a duly work truck that sits in his driveway.
I'm not here about that, I'm not here about other people's stuff, I don't, I don't care.
It's the point, if we can't have a duly in our driveway, why can't he have one in his?
The difference is, is a.
It's a, it's a commercial vehicle.
It's a legitimate commercial vehicle.
But it does not, does it have a regular truck bed or?
No, it has, it has a utility bed on it.
He would get cited, he, ma'am, he would be in violation too.
I'm not here for somebody else, I'm here for my own concern, you know, my parents aren't running their house, we own the home.
Alan, a lot of times what happens is, things get overlooked and somebody complains about them, then we go out there and we see them, Mr. Ruzik goes out there and sees them, and he is forced by law to follow our ordinance.
Yeah, no, I apologize, if you would pick up, I wish you would have called me, we probably, we probably could have handled this.
I was down Monday, when I got that, I just got out of court for wrecking a Harley over the summer, down in Youngstown, I got out of court, I came home, my paper was at my parents' house, I immediately came down here, had a conversation with the mayor's secretary, uh, the blonde that's over here, we talked, she's gonna give me all my permits and stuff before, she said she'd see what she could do, and I thought, I want to come down here and talk, 'cause I was hoping to catch the gentleman here, have a conversation with him, you know, um.
Alan, also, if your trailers, if you have a dual axle trailer?
No, I'm a dual axle.
Seeing a axle, you're a lot, dual axle, I believe that's how it states, right, Mr. Patrick?
Yeah, uh, all our ordinances are online, and like Mr. Beasley was saying, them ordinances are in the books, and, you know, if you're, you fit, your stuff fits that description, you are eligible to get cited.
Also, Mr. Ruzik did cite, he was gonna pay money, he's just trying to perform.
Right, I understand, but I, I just, so what, I'm expected to move all my trailers and to pay it for them to sit somewhere else?
No, like I said, if you would have contacted me, or you, you were, I would have had a conversation, I would explain it to you, and you just said, you know, hey, bro, can you give me 30 days, 60 days, I would have said absolutely. People get cited, the people that ignore, ignore these things, don't try to contact me, or the city, or Jen, or anybody down here.
Right.
And that's, that's why it's horrible you came down here, this could have been resolved.
I understand, but I, right now, I'm helping my parents with their house, with their house payment, um, my dad's disabled, he moves in a leg, can't move off a couch, um, my girl's at home taking care of him, taking care of our livestock while I work on the oil field, like, I'm going a lot, I have 80-hour weeks, you know what I mean? I'm trying to help my parents out, no, I gotta deal with this, I, I don't, I don't have the money for that right now, you know what I mean? I just got done moving from California to Akron, and then from Akron down here.
Brother, I, I totally, I respect you taking care of your family, and like, I feel, again, I feel bad that you're down here, if you would have contacted me, or, I, again, this is old news to me, you know, maybe, other than, you know, hundreds of these go out a week, so, you know what I mean, uh, if you and I would have had this conversation, you would have never had to miss work, I would have came to you, we could have squashed you, you would have told me what the situation is, we would have worked together, and we would, and we would have moved forward with it.
I, I, it's, so, from the understanding that me and her have, is, they're complaining about my tarp, that's on my trailer, 'cause when we had our last conversation, she said.
Another ordinance, I would like to know if you can't have tarp's yet.
I bought a cover for it, our, me and her, we deal with it, and she's saying, she's not seeing a big deal that I really don't have to move it right now, 'cause what me and her said, I'm not 100%, she said she had to look into things, and I haven't seen her since, 'cause I'm here, so like, what do I gotta do to, I, I, I just can't do that right now.
Can I just suggest, if you have a couple minutes after this meeting, and, and speak with Mr. Ruzik, 'cause that's my, just my secretary, so she's sometimes.
She's just trying to help me, I'm not.
Yeah, and we all, and I can tell you, I can tell you, we all are, so, and, and if you can hang around for a couple minutes, I'm sure we can.
I just wanna get this resolved, you know, my dad can't come down here and do it, my mom's stressed out with that.
Yeah, and when there's.
It's my gross responsibility, you know, I'm.
When there's different situations and things going on, that's what, we take that into consideration, obviously, so, I, if you have a minute.
We wanna work with everybody, you know, we wanna, we wanna work with everybody, like I said, if we would have this, again, you missing work is a terrible lot. If I would have known about this, I would have came knocked on your door, we just, we just figured it out, put a plan together, and that would have been the end of it.
I, I just wanted to get a result before it became tickets and issues, because I just don't want no more problems, you know, I came back here to take care of my dad and the work, not to deal with my neighbors and please my neighbors, you know what I mean?
You're in the city, working and doing the right thing, you're the kind of people we want.
He's up the street, you know, um, I, I, he has a nice house, he's got a little scenery, he's got ponds in his backyard.
Okay, uh, after the meeting, why don't you meet with the mayor and Joe, and you can have further discussion with it, and, uh, I'm sorry you had to come down forward, but they'll, they'll work with you. I said they will work with you.
All right, thank you.
Alan, I do wanna, I do wanna reiterate, they try to help as much as possible, but we still do have ordinance on the books we have to follow, and over time, I mean, they're, I'm sure gonna give you a grace period, given your situation, but over time, you are gonna have to comply to those.
I, I, I understand that, so, I, I could, um, if I have my privacy fence up and stuff, and if it can't be viewed by another property, then you're okay.
You, you can bring that up with, uh, Joey after, after your, after the meeting, talk with him, and he'll, he'll work with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and also for future references too, we are working on an ordinance that we, uh, brought up probably a year ago with driving campers and tag-along campers. So, once that comes about, and we do pass something on an ordinance, we're trying to keep them.
Out of sight.
Out of sight when it is not a primitive camping season. So, if it was, if it were to be, like, April through October, what we're gonna talk about now, we're okay with bringing them home, but, like, during the wintertime with them sitting there, we're kinda working on an ordinance where you have to put them away for the winter, though. Just, just, everything's fine right now, but just, just, some of your councilmen in your ward, I just wanna, I just wanna give you an insight on that.
I can fit mine behind my garage, it's all gravel, it's been gravel, um, we just fixed it all, I can put it behind my garage and nobody can see it, but you still wanna call me.
Right, I know, but we're, we're working on that, so.
That would be compliance, though, that would.
Okay.
As far as, as far as.
On gravel behind, behind the house, it can't protrude out from the front of the house, correct?
They don't wanna see it like in the front yard, beyond the front, front of the house.
So my, uh, house is on one lot, my garage is on another lot, and my garage sits behind my house, that's almost, it's real close to neighbors, but I can fit my trailers behind my garage where they're out of sight.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just giving you an insight what we're gonna try to do.
I appreciate, no, 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 if I could put it behind my garage and kinda like even do that, and it's a resolved some of it, I'll do it, I just need to do it before it gets too snowy out and I can't get back there.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Anyone else wishing to address council? Okay, uh, if none, at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion.
Dallas makes a motion, Ricky?
I'll second.
Seconds it.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
You have to, you have to.
Okay, go ahead and read, uh.
Whoever makes the motion, they have to, they have to explain what they're going into, the purpose to discuss the employment of a public employee, is what you're asking.
So, we have an executive session, uh, to discuss the employment of a public employee.
Okay, and who's second that?
I second it.
Second it?
Okay, Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Yes.
Okay, go on to executive session.
Hey, everybody, need your mic here? Mic or mic?
I need a motion to reconvene, Megan, executive session.
Make a motion to reconvene?
Second.
Second.
Clerk to follow a roll.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside?
Yes.
Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Okay, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, just remember, we gotta get sworn in, let Megan know who you want sworn in, pick up a date, if we wanna all do it together, wanna do your own thing, so keep that in mind. Second of all, Megan gave us a, a schedule of holidays for next year and meetings, uh, she made some notes on that, so review that and let her know which, if we wanna change the meeting date in November, okay? Need a motion, uh, adjourn this councilman.
Motion to adjourn.
Dallas makes a motion, Lori seconds it.
Mr. Ballack?
Yes.
Mr. Bayes?
Yes.
Mr. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Burnside? Ms. Greenwood?
Yes.
Ms. Pingley?
Meeting adjourned.
Ms. Pinkley?
Meeting adjourned.
Everybody get on with your holidays. Yeah. Yeah.[1447.45]